Good morning, it's 6:01. I'd like to open the October 16th meeting of the Hadley Select Board. With us this evening is Amy Parsons, Jane Nevinsmith, and myself, Randy Isner, David Phil, and Molly Keegan will not be with us this evening. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, signed by the Governor on February 15th, 2022, I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there is anyone present who is also recording this meeting. But the minutes reflect that nobody else has indicated that they are recording this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, then jump right into item 2.1. We have a special guest this evening, Omar Gomez, who would like to talk to us about his candidacy for the State House Hampshire District Number 2.
Hi, thank you. My name is Omar Gomez. I'm a city consul in East Hampton right now. I'm the president of the council. I've been serving for four terms. This is my second term as a council president. Thank you for having me here. Thank you, Randy, Akeem Sherman. Thank you for the community to find out information about me. You guys, you guys can go to homargomez.com and say, yes, Homer, because it starts with an H. So, homargomez.com, but it is homargomez.com. You can find me information there. I grew up in Puerto Rico. I have three daughters. I have a grandson. I've been in East Hampton since 2007. I work in a funeral home. My wife works in West Coast State University. And I'm here to serve. The people who knows me in East Hampton, and I'm going to talk about East Hampton because that's where I've been serving for the last seven years, right? People knows me like the people's person. I love to be outside. I love to talk to people. I love, I love to go get coffee. I love to find out what is the real problems in the community. Now, that way we can resolve it. I, one of those politicians that we believe that we should be out. Staying, staying in office or just participating in meetings, we're not helping that many people. We have to be out. And that's me. I love to be out. I love to find out what is happening, then we can bring those issues to the people in power, and that way we can resolve it. I speak another language. I speak Spanish. So, if we have people in this community that need to speak in Spanish, I'm available to, to have those conversations too. But I'm here just to help and to serve. And, and again, if you need something from me, feel free to reach me. I'm not crazy, but this is my number, 413-977-2677. Feel free to text me. That will be always easier for me to respond. Like, most of the time I have meetings or commitments, but I, I love to give my number to the community because that's the only way that we can get connected. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and good luck.
Yes. And, and the last thing that I want to say tonight, this is the first time that I'm coming to this meeting, but it's not going to be the last one. I make a commitment with the Hadley community that I'm going to be at least once, once a month to be in these meetings, remote or in person, but I will participate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving right along, we're going into the consent agenda, item 3.1. This evening, we have the minutes from October 2nd, 2024, and October 7th, 2024. Common victular license for Maple Farm Foods, common victular for Gol Mohar Realty Corp., DBA Pound Place Suite by Marriott, one-day wine and malt license for top of the campus outside the Mullins Center on 102524 from 5:30 to 7:30, and a common victular for Skinny Pancake.
I have one question. Is Skinny Pancake the one that was going in at Mo's?
Yes.
Okay. That's not the address. It's on the application. That's why I was curious.
B79 is not the right address?
Oh, I don't know. I...
It probably is. It's definitely on the right side of, at the correct side of the road.
I apologize for that question.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Amy, second by Jane. Any further discussion?
Um, with the top of the campus and everything, they're all set. Everything's good.
They'll have the special conditions put on it as they are shown in there by the fire chief with the fire watch, the fire detail, and they know this. At this point, that's just become the standard operating procedure for this license.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Right. Next up, item 4.1, public comments. Anybody in the audience or on Zoom that wants to speak?
I kind of have an audience.
Okay, that's a no. Moving on, item 5.1, old business, special town meeting warrant review and preparation. And I believe Mr. Mason will lead the way on that.
Sure. Okay. Jennifer is going to have to help me. She'll jump in. Jennifer and Linda worked really hard on putting this together. I have the, the financial ones, and Jennifer, do you want me to do these and you finish up with the rest, or do you want to do it the other way?
Can you, is it something you could put on the screen?
I am pulling it up for you.
Okay.
Right now.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 1 and Article 2, those are your budgets, your omnibus budget, full, you know, general fund budget, and then Article 2 is your enterprise funds budget. We are still working on some of the numbers. Linda and I should have everything squared away by Monday or Tuesday, but it will absolutely be ready for what we would like to do. We'll schedule a buy board meeting for next Wednesday between the Select Board and the Finance Committee. We will have everything in front of you by then. We're still waiting for a certification of free cash, and we are still making some adjustments to the budget requests that were made for all your budgets. Article 3 is a cleanup for prior balances. They are all water reserve cleanups, and they will all be going right back into water reserves. Article 4 is your capital. This is your total capital list of what was approved unanimously by the Capital Committee for 00. For a total of $921,500, the funding source is located next to the amount to tell everyone where the funding will be coming from. And please note that the, the folks at, several different people at Town Hall, as well as the Capital Committee, did a lot of work to whittle down what the original requests are to this list right here. And I'll be happy to explain that to, explain that at Town Meeting, you know, to folks just so we can make sure that we're clear how robust this process is.
Yeah.
4.2 is also a capital. That's a redirect though. It's a simple redirect of the $310,000 for those water tanks. It was originally going to be made for, for redesigning them, but they're now going to be replaced. That was also approved unanimously. Article 5, we, this is on every single special town meeting. These are simply, simply prior year bills, which somehow got missed and simply need to be paid because we can't pay them from prior fiscal years. Article 6, CPA extensions. The CPA is going to explain, actually, 6, 7, 8, and 9 are all CPA, right, Jennifer?
Correct.
CPA will be there to explain all of those. They did a great job explaining them. Andy actually did a great job explaining them to the Finance Committee last night at their meeting. Article 10. Article 10 is your special revenue revolving fund and grant balances, the total, basically to transfer raise and appropriate the sum of $24,015.24. The funding sources again are located to the right of, of the item being requested. Article 11 is your prudent investor rule. I believe this is going to be assigned for one of the Select Board members to explain, or is this?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, probably. Article 12 is your transfer from free cash to the state, Capital Stabilization Fund. This is something that has happened in several warrants in a row where you try to put as much money as you can into the capital stabilization for the future years. Article 13 is something similar, but this is your employee compensation fund. They're requesting to put $50,000 into the general fund free cash for employee compensation. This is specifically for people who are retiring, and there's, I'm getting confused now because I'm hearing myself talk. This is specifically for people who are retiring to be able to pay them out of their vacation time, sick time buyback and all of that. You have, I think, three or four, pretty, four, pretty significantly lengthy individuals with lengthy careers that are retiring this year. Article 14 is the townwide speed limit. I will explain that at Town Meeting. We had it in front of you folks a few weeks back. It's basically the 25 mile per hour thickly settled our business district, so we don't have to post speed limit signs all over the place. We can just post four or five at the town limits. Article 15, this one is probably going to need a lot more explanation from the fire chief, and it will definitely be a conversation between this board and the Finance Committee. We've had a couple of different finance team meetings, and ultimately, looking at the costs of continuing to run the ambulance. This is not to purchase the ambulance that was on the Capitol, the actual truck itself. This is the cost of continuing the ambulance service. The recommendation essentially, in order to, to do what the, the town has expressed, they'd like to be able to carry more free cash into the next fiscal year for annual town meeting. So, what the recommendation is, is to take $350,000 from stabilization for this fiscal year to cover the cost of the ambulance service as we move into the next fiscal year, thus reserving potentially $750,000 to $800,000 in free cash to be able to attack the FY '26 budget with. This will be a loan, and it will be, it will be discussed robustly to decide how and when, you know, these payments are made to pay things back. But that's like a 20,000-foot view for you, and like I said, this is something that is going to, you know, this, there's going to be some discussion about this at your next Wednesday meeting. We discussed it briefly at the Finance Committee last night. It will be discussed in further detail on Monday, and then it'll be back before you on Wednesday.
Is there, Ken and Amy, when they come back, are there some sort of simple numbers for the audience? Like, this is how much the ambulance has burned and it's paid back.
Yeah.
Yep.
Really want to hear.
Yep.
Is what that is up from what it was for the few months at Grand Year before?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
My intention is to have, the Fin, the Finance Committee actually wants to talk, wants to talk to the fire chief as well as the DPW director about a couple of different issues that, that are on the warrant for them. So, Mike will have, you know, already spoken to the Finance Committee a little bit and answered some of their questions, and I assume a lot of the questions are going to be the same when he gets in front of you folks next Wednesday. We'll make sure that they're both here for, for questions. Article 16, did we change the, we changed it to contracts, Jennifer?
Yeah, you're, you're not using the one.
I'm not using the most updated one. All right, so Articles.
Look up here. You can just read it from there.
Article 16 is your Select Board projects, or your Select Board contracts. Essentially, we have two contracts that are out there right now, or two, two items that the Select Board has already decided on, but the funding was never in place for them. Your form of government study has actually already begun. People are already, already doing, you know, the work for that committee, and the solar project study, I believe, was voted on by the Select Board this past June. The funding unfortunately was never allocated for either one of those issues, and that third one now you have is your town administrator search firm, which we just sent the RFQs out today. Then we will make sure that nothing is signed before the town meeting appropriates the funds for that. So, we felt that the only possible way to, well, I should say this, the only way to, to get these funds is this way. There's just no, no money in, in different pots, you know, as far as we can see, to pull for these funds. And we do have to have all three of them in order to continue these projects. So, that's Article 16. I will do my very best to explain it to, explain it at Town Meeting, but all three of them are necessary because two of them have actually already, already begun and/or have been voted on and approved by the Select Board a little bit before my, my time. And Article 17 is the last one that I had on my page, and then Jennifer, I think, can probably take over, is the Adair Place Acceptance. We've met. Randy and Jane and Scott have met and discussed this. It's on the agenda for Adair Place to be accepted as a public road and for the town to take over maintenance.
And my company's name is on this, but this plan that they refer to was done in 2006, well before my time on the Select Board, so I don't believe there's going to be a conflict there.
Perfect. You want?
Yep, sure.
Okay.
So, the next articles are actually the bylaw articles. One is about waste. And Randy, I feel like you could actually answer these better because you are actually on the bylaw committee, correct?
Yes, when I can go. I'm not, I'm not a very good attendee, but Article 18, waste in the streets, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but the, the big concern is that people are mowing their lawns, blowing the grass in the streets, shoveling their driveway, snow blowing, plowing snow into the street, piling sticks and whatnot that they think the town's going to pick up, which we don't do anymore, in the street, making a hazard. So, there's, just talks about what is rubbish and what is not, and, you know, that you should not put it in the street.
And the next one is the bylaw for constables. And that is to make the constables earn an appointed position instead of elected. And then from there is all planning board. They have given me rough drafts here, but they'll be the official ones. They'll be here on the 23rd.
Right.
And that is your warrant. I think it's a good one.
The only, I'm not exactly sure who makes this decision, but the, the only recommendation I would make as far as consent agenda for your warrant, I'm not sure if you do consent agendas on STM, but my, our recommendation after discussing it, Jennifer and Linda and I, would be that you could likely take Articles 3, 5, 6, and 10 and make them consent agendas. They're basically either transfer articles where money is going back into some type of town coffer or very small payments for prior year bill balances and things like that, which, you know, shouldn't cause, as a consent agenda says, shouldn't cause much conflict that people would just vote it through. Your Article 6 is simply a deadline adjustment for the CPA, and 10 is your, something similar to, I believe, number 3. So.
Okay, so Jennifer, if you haven't done so already, would you please get the moderator a copy of this?
He absolutely already has a copy. He does not have the latest version, but I will email it to him tomorrow.
Okay, as long as he knows there's some stuff going on with the consent, so he can voice his opinion on that.
We had often talked about planning for all the consent articles together.
So, don't, don't be married to where everybody is right now. Don't get it in your heart that Adair Place is Article 17. Because I'm, I'm going to shift a little bit more as we go through, and I know that Finance Committee wanted to talk about rearranging some of the articles as well, so I thought y'all could take that up on the 23rd.
Yeah.
So, yes, everybody has a number right now, but that doesn't mean it's their number.
Right.
The only one I can guarantee you is Article 1, 2. That's it. And the planning board will be at the end. Those are the only guarantees when we can adjust accordingly.
I don't think 5 can be consent agenda, and I think it's just some weird state rule because I always have to present that one at all the town meetings that I remember.
Which one is it?
It's the, in, prior year invoices.
It might be that it has to have a two-third majority vote, which is why it can't be consent. We'll double check on it. This was just a, excuse me, this was just a, a, a quick conversation of the ones that were non-controversial, but we'll, we'll, we'll get there. This is just the first go-round.
Yeah, no worries. I just remember it's always some, it's like some weird rule with that because I always, I always get to present it.
This year, they're low.
They are.
I have it open. I've kept it open just until I hear from the accountant a couple more times because they always seem to fall out of the woodwork, but it's so far so good, and knock on wood, but it's, it looks like it's going to be a low one this year.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or concerns about at this point?
Now, when are we doing the, did we already set up the?
Forums on November 6th at 7:00 PM. It'll be in person here and on Zoom. Alert has already gone out to the public telling them, like, I did save the date that I had, I bet y'all all got your email, right? And y'all are going to be on the 23rd with the Finance Committee, and you'll meet with them, and hopefully y'all will be ready to take some votes and everything, so we have that ready for the.
Public forum.
Okay, and Town Meeting is when? November?
14.
14.
7:00 PM, Hopkins Academy.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Moving along to item 6.1, Employee, Employee Appointments, Resignation and Retirements, Police, DPW, and Human Resources.
Okay, who's that? You will see one thing on there crossed out. So, we have only two resignations. My administrative assistant, Lauren Trombley, resigned, as well as Jones Payroll Assistant Emily Silva has also resigned their positions. We're very grateful for the services that they provided to us and wish them well and wish them luck in their future endeavors. The third one that is on there, actually, I spoke with Scott this morning. Scott is having a very hard time finding a mechanic, and Seth actually reached out to him and, and they had a discussion, and he requested to be able to rescind his resignation, and at the same time, Scott was struggling to find someone to replace him. So, at Scott's request, we have accepted him being able to rescind his resignation, and he is going to start back up working with us. So, I would just ask that you accept the two resignations that are not struck through on your agenda.
Okay. Jane has motion to accept.
Second.
Amy has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Right, motion passes unanimously. Next up, item 6.2, Departmental Update, Hadley Media. Alex.
Good evening. Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Great. How are you?
Good, very good. You saved me, saved the best for last, so. Wait a few moments to get this up. Ron, Ken. There we go. I promise it's short.
That's what you said last time.
I have the power to stop them at this point there.
Okay.
Subjective.
Start your short presentation.
All right, well, do. All right, so this is my report for this evening. I do want to thank everyone for your patience with, we've been having issues trying to broadcast our channels. At first, it was, we had some IT issues going on with pretty much too many people touching our stuff at one point, where it kind of screwed things up, and that finally got fixed. And then our streaming provider took away our ability to take what's called RTMP poll. Pretty much it's just a URL that we could put into our server, and it'll actually broadcast out. We're no longer available to do that unless we pay more, which unfortunately, we'll have to wait till after Town Meeting because I did put in the raise and appropriate, to apportion some money to fund that service.
Can I ask a question while you're?
Yes, absolutely.
What does that mean? How does that impact us, you, the townspeople's ability to see what's going on?
So, we're not able to broadcast live on the channel. We can still upload stuff to the channel. We, people would still be able to watch our content in the meetings especially. We, on the show, because we just can't view it live on the channel. You can still view it live on YouTube.
Why? I thought our cable access gave us direct capabilities.
Yeah, yes and no. So, we have to provide that portion of it. We have to provide the live, livestream part of it.
And if that's not working because?
Because our streaming provider does not charter or cable cast, took that away from us. Because they updated all their tiers, and they, in the tier that we had, they kind of just took it off.
So, it's basically a money thing, Jane?
Yeah, pretty much. It's, it's an extra $250. We just got to wait. $250.
A year?
More.
More a year, yeah.
Okay, but he said we got to wait till after Town Meeting to see what he's got left for money.
Okay, well, it's going to be raised and appropriate, hopefully.
Yeah, okay.
When, when Finance Committee speaks about it, I'll definitely explain more.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about the broadcasting? Okay, we will get it up as soon as possible. I appreciate, as I said, I appreciate everyone's patience on that. So, pretty much what I'm going to do is, it's going to be very short. We'll give a update on Hadley Media, what we've been doing, our broadband update, and a digital equity update, and then I'll give you what I'm going to need in the future to help us continue doing what we get to doing. So, this is a, this is what we have for new subscribers, watch hours, and views this year. Unfortunately, they're not up to what they were last year. We mainly, a lot of it, there was less sports to film this, this, this year, this calendar year. So, that's why you might see a dip, but everything else is pretty stable, stable. Everything is pretty much the same. And then these are our recent uploads to our YouTube channel and our channels. So, we, so they range from early September to this past Friday. We, we've been all over the place getting more diverse programming for the public. That's how they related. And then broadband update. So, we've been working with Senator Comerford and Representative Carey's offices to help Cemetery Road, Honey Pot Road, and Moody Bridge Road to get broadband to. Honey Pot Road and Moody Bridge Road to get broadband to um, there, to those uh, to those areas of town.
Any progress?
It's very much in progress. Um, it's gonna take a good year or two, um, because. We've been acting to be challenged, and that's a federal program where. Um, the federal government's gonna be trying to get the hu- the whole country hundred percent to a hundred percent all households getting internet. So, um, right now, now at this stage, any, any ISP or internet service providers. Will be able to pre-approve replication to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute. Um. So, and then they would have to go to the federal government to get approval, their plan, how they're gonna implement um. Uh, to be challenge funding for that. Um, and there's a lot going on. There's not much I can say because we are dealing with um, red, um, pe- with reject people right now. Um, but I, as the luck bar knows, I do try to keep you guys' update as much as possible outside meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you're more than welcome to ask me a question at any, at any point about it. I just wanna be very careful about how public we are about it. I'm not trying to hide anything. Um, we're just trying to make thi- make sure things are running smoothly and that everyone's happy. Um, any questions about broadband? Great. Alright, so the steering committee is underway. Um, we have a digital equity fair slash public hearing on December twelfth here at. The fair will start at three o'clock and the public hearing will start at six thirty P M. Um, and we're also, yesterday I met with the senior centers uh. A D F Business Committee, that's the all timers. Thank you. Um, Business uh Committee for Digital Skills, um, trying to try to help them out with. Um, getting some first laptops if possible um, to help uh. Um.
Educate students who don't understand how to even turn a computer off.
That's a good way to put it.
So we're gonna really be starting from the get.
You're gonna get some help, Jane?
So, so yeah, we're helping out with all their new digital skills uh curriculums, um, helping on the um technology part of it. So, um, we're working with the Alliance for uh Digital Equity on this project, hopefully. Um, to get those laptops in. I just gotta make sure we are getting some, I just gotta make sure people respond and we'll be good to go.
Piece about that that you may not think about is your doctor's office says, okay, you're gonna have a television appointment. And this senior has no clue. This is what's happening and how to deal with it.
Yeah. Wait.
So, we need to.
And it's, it goes all under digital equity where it's simple things like going, seeing a doctor online or. Um, making sure you're finally, or if making sure you're doing basic life things, a lot of things are internet now. So, um, a lot of things are technological and they're only gonna get more complicated from here. So, if we can keep a, be one step ahead. Um, we should do that. Any questions so far? How am I doing on time?
Speed it up.
Great. Okay, so we're um, the, the committee also decided we're gonna continue with the uh survey. Um, we took a little break because there was free surveys going on. We're hoping to get a few more now that there's less survey, surveys going on. And plus the consultants, consultants like to get paper copy out to people at the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that they can fill it out and um. And then um, departmental needs. Uh, so these are things that um, I, we should uh, talk about in the future. So uh, the first part is um, had a media restructuring, expanding staff for FY twenty six. So you can tell by the, the gifts here, um, the department needs help. Um, and then we'll also wanna work on some uh personnel and standardization guide. Um, and uh, at some point, this luck bar will need to approve, have a final approval for it to be challenged. So we, so that we can have those areas of town be hooked up to broadband.
Mm-hmm.
That won't, that won't come until twenty twenty five. Not sure when, but it won't be until next year. Um. And that is the, that's the report.
Alright.
Any questions?
You're welcome. I don't have any further questions, sir, but thank you for your time.
You're welcome. If anyone has any other questions, feel free to reach out. You know how to reach me.
You gonna give us your cell phone number, too?
I'll give it to you privately.
Alright, thanks, Alex.
You got it.
Right, next up is the town administrators' report.
Okay. I will go quickly. If you open up the document, okay, and if you want, anything in the light green color is what's new since the last report. Um. Uh, October six.
Seventeen.
Twenty, twenty first.
Yes.
Um, so offer made, ha- has made and been made and accepted for your human resource director position. Um, the opioid mental health counselor will happen after town meeting once we uh secure the funding for that. Benefits coordinator, assessor and assistant assessor, building department permitting coordinator. And uh, the senior admin assistant to the chief of police, all are posted. Um, and uh, I have a selection for my position and I'll present it next week. Um, at your select board meeting. Um, government restructuring committee, we did have a kickoff meeting in between the last select board meeting and now. Uh, it went very well. They selected a chair and a secretary and they discussed next steps and we have another meeting set for next week or the week after. Classification compensation succession study. Uh, I have a meeting set for this Friday with a lady from the human resources department on the Collin, the Collins Center to discuss next steps. Your two unions which were in negotiations, we have potential tentative agreements set. We are simply working on the math uh, so that we can put it on your town warrant and find out how much it's going to cost. Uh, fiber update, um, I don't, no, yeah, I, I don't think I, maybe I did tell you this last week. But I'm trying to put together a meeting with the fire chief and the department heads to discuss uh what's going on with the fiber. It's more of a low level meeting just to keep people on the same page and make sure nothing gets missed so that we can finally complete this project. Uh, if you go all the way down to the landfill municipal solar at the bottom of page two. This project uh is getting started again. I've met with Jane um recently uh to discuss this. And this is why you have that article on the warrant so that we can pay for the initial study and get it moving. Um, Hockham Cemetery Fence, this project is finally back on track. Uh, the workers, the can, the uh, um, contractor was there last week and I believe this week as well. And it will be done soon, hopefully.
Yeah, he was there today.
Yeah.
I stopped and talked to him.
So thank you to Randy and to Scott and to Tommy for basically dragging this across the finish line for the town. Um, they did some, some work and had some conversations with those individuals to, to kind of get it going. Um, as far as the levy rehab project, I have spoken to the engineer. And we expect a final draft report by the end of October. Have something in my calendar to reach out and ping him and um, and get that. Year uh, two thirty four Middle Street, this should be completed. Um, totally uh for the town by November first. Um, your Goodwin, uh, the uh, the Goodwin project, the space need study is on your town warrant. Library roof, no major changes, but it is still moving forward. There's emails.
Today.
Yep, oh, that's right. Yes, we did. We saw people on the roof today. Yep, so it's still moving forward. They are still working on it. Uh, I have a couple, I have one reminder uh for you. Um, which is for um, the town clerk. She wanted me to remind everybody that in-person early voting starts this Saturday. Uh, the hours are as follows. Saturday, ten nineteen, ten A M to two P M at the clerk's office. Sunday, ten twenty, no evening hours. Monday, ten twenty one through Friday, ten twenty five, nine thirty, nine thirty eight, yeah.
So, Sunday, you said no evening hours. That really means no early voting.
No early voting hours, I'm sorry. No early voting hours. Um, Monday, the twenty first through Friday, the twenty fifth, fifth, nine thirty to two thirty at the clerk's office at Town Hall. Saturday, uh, ten twenty six, ten A M to two P M at the clerk's office. Sunday, no early voting again. Thank you, Randy. And Monday, ten twenty eight through Friday, November first, nine thirty to two thirty at the clerk's office. Um, that's all I have for you for the report for this week.
Okay, that's quite a bit. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Okay, uh, do we have any liaison reports?
Not I.
Okay, not I. Anybody have any announcements? Okay. Item ten, we're gonna go into executive session.
So.
We need Amy's expertise on this.
Alright, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A three. To discuss strategy with respect um to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body for the compensation study. The municipal employee union firefighter union and. Hmm, 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 hold on a second. It's a little wonky.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Okay, um. The municipal employee union firefighter union, um. And is there another one?
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Yeah, no, no, it's um, hang on a second.
Do you not see them?
No, I can see them. I'm just trying to like get the sentence structure right.
Okay.
Okay, so. Okay, so it's going for the compensation study, the municipal employees' union. Um, UPS EU local four two four, um. And um, MADIV one twenty nine, the firefighters' union, IAF local four five eight six. And executive session, uh, and the following executive session minutes in accordance with Chapter thirty A, Sections twenty two F G. Uh, October nineteenth, twenty twenty two, February seventeenth, twenty twenty one, uh, March seventeenth, twenty twenty one. March thirty first, twenty twenty one, April seventh, twenty twenty one, April fourteenth, twenty twenty one. August fourth, twenty twenty one, October thirteenth, twenty twenty one, February fifth, twenty twenty. April fourth, twenty twenty. Uh, March fourth, twenty twenty, October seventh, twenty twenty, November fourth, twenty twenty. December sixth, twenty twenty, January twenty third, twenty nineteen, April third, twenty nineteen. July seventeenth, twenty nineteen, September fourth, twenty nineteen, September twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. November thirteenth, twenty nineteen, December fourth, twenty nineteen, and December eleventh, twenty nineteen. And we will also not be reconvening in open session.
So, Amy. Okay, thank you. You have a motion and a second. As Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and sucketed to enter into executive session. And that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the town of Hadley. Roll call vote, please, Jennifer.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the end of the open session tonight.
Recording is stopped.